Welcome to the Board of Library Trust in Special Meeting, Monday, April twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. I now call this meeting to order at seven o'clock two. Recently, regional and local elected and appointed bodies have been subjected to disruptive races verbal impacts by anonymous callers to virtual meetings. The city of Mountain View is fully committed to racial, religious, and cultural equity and justice as we strive to create a welcoming, safe, inclusive community for all. This advisory body commission welcomes respectful and non-threatening public comments regarding matters over which the advisory body commission has jurisdiction. Comments deemed otherwise pursuant to the council code of conduct and the government code may be grounds for immediately terminating speakers. All votes will be taken by a vocal vote now as members of the reduction to. Chairperson Kristen Higaki.
President.
Vice Chairperson Claudia Bambasta.
President.
Board member Eric Neerwijk.
President.
Board member Sharon Su is absent and Board member Barbara Mason Bear.
Present.
Minutes for the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five meeting have been delivered to board members. If there are no corrections or additions, the motion is in order to approve these minutes. Is anybody on the line?
I move. I second. I second Eric.
Member Higaki. Bambasta approved. Board member Neerwijk.
Approved.
Board member Lisa Bear. Oral Communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the board on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. If there appears to be a large number of speakers, speaking time may be reduced to fifty one point five minutes. State law prohibits the board from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on non-agenda items? Donations that are on your donations. Next, we'll move on to presentations. Let me introduce our librarian, our communications librarian. She can also give a brief intro. Where she starts her presentation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Katie Hall. I am the communications librarian here at the library. And today I'm going to take you on a brief tour of the library communications from past, present, to future. And along the way, I will also talk more about my current role as a communications librarian later in this session. So when we look at library communications, we can think about it in terms of four different time periods. We have before rebranding, during rebranding, in the present, and in the future. For each of these periods, we'll go over the development of the communications pieces that we have today, such as their director's reports, council newsletters, social media newsletters, and more, as well as the major changes that took place during each of these time periods. The goal of this presentation is to provide you with a high-level overview of our communications efforts here at the library. I'll also share its evolution into its current form by discussing how and why some of these efforts and communications channels have changed over the years. And finally, we'll provide a look ahead at the future of library communication. So let's start with the period before rebranding. This will take us up to the year twenty nineteen. Our records go back as far as two thousand and fourteen for the director's reports. All reports until two thousand and eighteen were written by the previous library director. One, a couple of the patterns for these director's reports are that they did not contain contain that many photos, and they did not include much information about previous programs. So I have included a screen capture. It's a little bit small. But this is what the previous director's reports looked like. You notice that it has the older logo up at the top. It does include some photos because this particular report was going over our remodel during the time of two thousand and seventeen. But the pattern mainly for these reports within this timeframe was not very many photos and not very much information about the previous programs and highlights and so forth. In August twenty eighteen, we, they started being written by the new library director and the current library director. And the, the report started having more photos of people and of programs, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation as well. The council and city hall newsletters did not exist at this point in time because the communications and outreach division that the city was not established yet. And I will go into much more detail on that later as well in the next phase. The website has a very long history of development with the city, and it had its own evolutionary process. In the early two thousands, the website was centralized and written in HTML with CSS. And you can see an example of that on the left side of the slide with the teal header and navigation menu. In two thousand and six, the city's website migrated to the Civica Content Management System, which you can see an example of in the middle image with the blue background. And it went through several redesigns all the way up until September twenty nineteen, which you'll see in the rightmost image on the slide. And it's important to note that the library was included as a section within the city's website. As far as social media goes, our Facebook account was created in two thousand and nine and our Instagram account was created in two thousand and ten. Meta does not allow me to go back as far as that in order to pull examples for what our posts looked like back then. But here's an example from around two thousand and twenty one. And you can tell from the screen capture that all of the images look a little bit different. It doesn't really look unified. And there's, there's kind of different information located in different areas on each of those, on each of those posts. Our YouTube account was created in two thousand and ten, and our first videos appeared on the platform during that time. The first videos included slideshows of the history of Mountain View. It included a lot of historical photos. And in two thousand and fourteen, we started seeing more videos of librarian doing storytime videos. So she would be performing songs and rhymes and things like that. And in this rebranding period, staff also proposed a development of a social media team. So the goal of that team was to establish, was to establish a cost-functional team who would be involved in publishing social media content for the library. And the objectives were to assess the current status of our social media platforms, build connection with our audience, increase our presence and reach on social media, drive traffic to our website, gather advocates, and serve our customers. For the newsletters, we have two different types in this rebranding period. The one in, on the right side of the slide was produced by adult services, and the one in the middle was produced by youth and, for youth and families. Both consisted of a main article and a list of upcoming programs and this kind of square image in the middle, but that's as far as the similarities go. You can kind of tell by these two images that they, they look very different. There's different header styles. There's different graphical elements. The typefaces are different. The colors are different. And if you could read the articles, you'd notice that the tone is different as well. The youth and family's tone is a lot more informal compared to the one produced by adult services. Even the frequency in which the newsletters were published was different. So the youth and families newsletter was published once per month. And the adult programs newsletter was published twice per month initially, and eventually it went down to once per month as well. For outreach events, it was really up to our individual staff members to do the logistics and organizations around our participation of different events. There was no one dedicated staff member for organizing those logistics and not one person who served as the contact person for these, for these events. The photo on the left shows two of our librarians at the, at a Castro Elementary Outreach in two thousand and eighteen. And the photo on the right shows two staff members at the Earth and Arbor Day Celebration in two thousand and nineteen. And you'll see that the tablecloth is very dark. It is black colored, and there is a different typeface for the text, and it also features the old logo on the tablecloth as well. For the flyers, staff are responsible for creating their own flyers as well, and there was no one unified template at this time. So there were many different designs. I just pulled a couple of examples here. But you'll notice these are both library programs, but they use different typefaces, different colors, different graphical elements, different layouts. Unless you see at the top where Mountain View Public Library Presents is written and the logo at the bottom, it's not immediately obvious that these are events associated with this library. Then something very exciting happened in two thousand and nineteen, and we hired a summer intern. And the charge of this intern was to collaborate with staff to develop the library's communication and marketing strategy, looking at consistent branding and messaging. Their objectives were to create a marketing plan that outlines ways to promote services and programs, create a communication and marketing stylebook, create a checklist for promoting events for new services, and determining new best practices for the library's newsletter. They were also tasked with reviewing the library's current social media accounts and to provide suggestions on improving engagement, including looking at best practices for social media and suggestions for new social media accounts. We also created templates with consistent branding for the library's specific publicity materials, including flyers for events, flyers for outreach events, general announcements like holiday closures, and also materials that present general information on library services as well. So we can summarize this rebranding period in two main points. The first is that there was no one unified look and tone for the library in two thousand and nineteen and before, and that communication teams were widespread amongst individual staff members. Now we can move on to the during rebranding time period, and there is going to be a lot of major changes going on in this three-year time span from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-three. A major change, perhaps the most impactful change for us, was that the communications and outreach division was established at the city. This division leads the overall communication and multicultural community outreach efforts for the city. The chief communications officer was hired as the lead of this division, and the team provides communications resources to support departments in the development of news releases, media relations, social media strategy, video production, and web content management. The chief communications officer started the communications roundtable, which is a cross-functional team across city departments that brings us all together once per month to exchange news and ideas related to communications. During this time period on our side, we created the library communications team, frequently referred to as LCT. This group was charged with developing a messaging style and branding of library communications, developing strategies, and establishing processes for marketing services and programs, evaluating social media accounts, and establishing communication teams across the staff. The director's reports at this time were written by the library director and the analysts. The reports included more photos of people and covered highlights from the past month's events as well as staff shadows. The creation of the communications and outreach division at the city solidified a process for providing the council regular updates in the form of the city council update, which later became the council connection newsletter in two thousand and twenty-one. On the right, we have an image of our first submission to the city council update in April twenty twenty. In two thousand and twenty-two, the communications and outreach division created a presentation to describe the differences between the council connection and city hall connection newsletters. So the council connection is the weekly communication from the city manager and city departments to the city council, and it highlights departmental, programmatic, regional, state, and federal updates of interest to the city council. The city hall connection is a little bit different. It's a bi-weekly connection, bi-weekly communication sent to residents and small businesses that focus on upcoming events and larger updates within the city. During the rebranding period, the website underwent a major change into the form that you see it in today. Library staff implemented changes on the website with the goals to ensure that all pages are mobile responsive and mobile friendly. The website is easy to use, that it is cleanly presented with consistent layouts and formats, and that the look is updated to increase website engagement. The new website was launched in May two thousand and twenty-three. Social media had a very interesting evolutionary process during this time as well. Different age level services use different platforms. So adult services was using Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Children was using just Facebook, and teens had separate accounts on Twitter and Instagram. Our summer intern provided feedback for best practices and researched other libraries' social media accounts, and they ultimately recommended that the library only keep one account per platform. In response, we formed a social media subcommittee with one staff representative per workgroup. The subcommittee split responsibilities for posting to different platforms, and each workgroup was responsible for posting, proofreading, and ensuring that we kept to a regular daily posting schedule. Each member was also responsible for responding to customer questions on the platform that they were overseeing. On the right, you see a screen capture of posts that were published during the rebranding period, more toward the two thousand and twenty-three end. And you'll notice that this time we have a template, and our posts are more consistent in their look. We're using the city's branded colors. The look is overall is more uniform, and people are more likely to associate these events with us because of our consistent branding. A big change also came to our newsletters. LCT decided to combine one newsletter for the library with content coming from all divisions of the workgroups. LCT also worked on reformatting the layout and content to include more human interest stories and articles that were more in-depth and provided more insider knowledge for the library. It was an intentional change to move from two newsletters to one newsletter. For one, it was difficult to manage two newsletters at the same time. But moreover, it was a chance for us to unify our voice for the library by combining the adults and youth services together. So it still included content from both of those workgroups, but into just one newsletter instead. The image in the middle of the slide shows how the newsletter looks during this rebranding timeframe, and it looks pretty similar to what we have now. For outreach events, in connection with the city rebranding, we refreshed our outreach supplies to feature our new logo and colors. And in two thousand and twenty-two, we were approved to purchase new giveaway items and acquired a new branded tablecloth that you see in the photo on the right side of the slide. For flyers, LCT and our intern also worked together to unify the look of them. LCT worked on condensing information presented on the flyers, and our intern created the draft layouts. So you can tell from these images on the slide that the look of the flyers is becoming more recognizable and a feature a cleaner look. So to summarize this rebranding period, we began seeking direction from the new communications and outreach division of the city and rolled out their new branding. We also started using more templates to create a more consistent look and feel for our communications, and the content became more personable and friendly with a focus on customers, service, customers, staff, and human interest pieces. So now we can move on to the present, which are the two years, two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-five. So one of the major changes was that a communications librarian was hired. So I am, I am the communications librarian. Through this position, the library provides communications internally and externally through one voice. And I collaborate with staff on a daily basis to gather information about the library and share it to our various audiences using informal and formal language. So when we're thinking about formal language, that's more the director's reports and the council connection newsletters. And we use more of an informal voice for social media and our newsletters. I attend the monthly communications roundtable meetings hosted by the chief communications officer, and I create a summary document called the Year Review at the end of each fiscal year. And that document highlights all of the, what the library did in the previous fiscal year, including program and circulation statistics, highlights about programs and outreach, and, and much more. I am assigned to the administration divisions as I collaborate with staff across all of our different divisions, and I also collaborate with staff from other city departments as well. One of my main tasks is to ensure that we remain consistent with city branding while maintaining our own identity and personality at the library. And I continually search for ways to make intentional changes to our communication systems based on feedback, data, and observations. There are also a few changes made to LCT. At the time, the charge was largely remains the same. But I now facilitate that team, and it serves as a way for me to maintain an open two-way communication channel between all of our different workgroups. And it also acts as an advisory group for questions and projects, which I will dive a deeper into in a moment. It also provides a sounding board for new ideas about outreach giveaways, feedback received from staff and customers, as well as project proposals. Since the team includes members from all of our workgroups, they also provide content for our communication channels, such as the newsletter, social media, director's reports, council connection, and more. So I helped the library director with drafting the director's reports. Since I publish the library's other communications as well, it's become more efficient for me to pull all those pieces together to write one complete document that I can cross-reference with other pieces that I have worked on. And this helps create a full update once per month. And the reports include the new logo and lots of program highlights and photos, and such as this photo from our recent sewing babo program where they made these daily robot crafts. I continue to provide consistent updates to the council connection and city hall connection newsletters on a bi-weekly basis, maintaining consistent content with our colleagues at the communications and outreach division. So one of my other main tasks is to ensure that the website stays up to date. I do this while, as staff requests edits for certain pages that they are, you know, they are responsible for and keeping an eye on, and the collaboration with our webmaster at the city. I helped our team recently edit these pages, the Amplify Teen Voices page, Press Reader, History Center Collection, Nerder's Program. Our total website visits per month increased by fifteen percent from the last fiscal year, so visitors seem to be responding positively to the updated look and feel of our website. The top five pages for our website include My Library Account, New York Times Online, Getting a Library Card, Reserve a Group Study Room, and the Digital Library. I've taken to posting on all of our social media accounts as well. For our social media platforms, we've seen a five percent and fifteen percent follower increase in Facebook and Instagram respectively compared to the previous fiscal year. I work to create a variety of content, so in addition to the program promotions that we have been doing, I also create reels or short videos and post more photos that highlight our events and our collections. I also use monetized boosts to increase visibility and program attendance. And sometimes staff will ask me to initiate the boost, and other times I will ask the staff if they would like for me to try to provide them with a boost, and sometimes they don't know that we have that feature available, our social media accounts. For the newsletters, our monthly newsletter has shown a thirty-three percent subscriber growth compared to last fiscal year. This past Saturday, we attended the Earth and Arbor Day Celebration at the Community Center, and someone had told me that they were unsure of how to keep up with library events, and I let her know about the newsletter, which she didn't know about, so got a new subscriber on that. So a lot of our growth is attributed to you just continually spreading the word about our newsletter and knowing that people will value the information that is published in them every month. I also heard recently from my colleague James, who works at the History Center, that received a visitor recently who was interested in a piece that we published in the previous newsletter featuring some items from the History Center. So that way we know that our newsletter is effective. For our outreach events, we're going very strong. It's very much aligned well. We attended nine events last fiscal year, and will have attended fourteen events by the end of this fiscal year. So far, we've distributed one thousand two hundred and ninety-two giveaways for this fiscal year, and we still have five more events that we are planning to attend. We've been bringing our bookmobile to events so visitors can browse our collection, our materials, and receive library cards. In the photo, you see one of our staff seated at an outreach table at last year's multicultural festival city. And the communications librarian is the point of contact for these larger outreach events with the city, so I'm continuing to grow my contacts with other city departments. For flyers, LCT developed a template that we still currently use. You see these flyers all over the library, and they're very distinctive, so people know which library is hosting the events on site. We also make sure we include our logo at the bottom of each of these flyers. Projects, these are a list of projects that I am currently working on. The Staff Resource Guide was newly updated and will launch this, this week. The product is the result of a large collaborative effort with our supervisory and administrative staff. We'll soon be replacing the touchscreen stations on both levels of the library, and I'll be working with our different workgroups to modernize the look of the interface and customize it for the sections that they'll be in. So we'll have a look for the children's room, the teen zone, and the lobby on the second floor. One of the big pluses for getting these new reach kiosks, what they're called, so that they can be updated from the backend from, for one computer, it would be from my computer. With the current software, I would have to update each of those kiosks individually, so then we have ten in the building. So I'm excited for this project to launch and for that to be a very good, a good change to our current system. I also provide marketing support for the summer reading program, and I'm working very closely with our youth bookmobile and collections workgroup to ensure high participation in the program. I'm working with a few of our staff on Brain Fuse Burst, which is a series of short videos that highlight specific features for each of our brain use resources. We'll be involved now, job now, college now, and bet now, and those will be appearing on YouTube on a weekly basis. Every year, I work with the multicultural engagement program at the city to coordinate the library's participation in the Spanish and Chinese language civic leadership academy presentations. The Spanish academy presentation is actually happening this Wednesday, so we're preparing for that. This typically involves hosting the cohort for each of these programs at the library, and working with our staff on delivering a tailored presentation to each cohort based on their specific interests and questions. We recently finished celebrating National Library Week, and I created a way for residents to engage with us by asking simple questions. What do you like about the library? We received a lot of very nice and positive responses. And we also had a special giveaway that included a tote bag, themed t-shirt, and other special library swag for, one for children, one for teens, and one for adults. I also worked with our team here and a colleague at the communication, at City Communications to produce a video that put the bookmobile in spotlight in honor of National Library Outreach Day, which you can view on our YouTube channel right now. So in summary, for communications in the present, we are contributing, we are continuing to apply the city's branding to all of our public-facing content to build recognition and public trust. The library has consolidated communications efforts into one staff member to help maintain a consistent tone and personality. And we continue to collaborate with staff for edits on our publications and to ensure that our messages are being communicated clearly and accurately. Okay, so what lies ahead in the future for library communications? One very exciting development, and I'm very excited about it, is the, we're getting a summer intern this year. Their main charge will be to produce videos that promote our various library services, including our homebound service that is headed by the librarian in this photo. We should also, we would also create videos for other services like our new Amplify Teen Voices program and continue spreading the word about the History Center. Some ways to measure impact of this intern would be by the number of videos that they produce, engagement on those videos such as likes and shares, a report that the intern would complete at the end of their internship that would include their learnings and summary of their experience with us, and our own evaluation of the interns. For the director's reports, we'll aim to remain consistent with the content type and publishing schedule. We will ensure that the board members are continually updated on our projects, programs, and services. And one way to measure an impact for the director's reports is based on comments received from board members and meeting attendees. Our goals will be very similar for the council and city hall newsletters. We'll intermain consistent with the content type and publishing schedule. We'll continue to update the city manager on how the library is achieving the council's goals and initiatives. And for both of these newsletters, we'll measure impact based on comments that we receive from council members and residents. And we can also track the growth of attendance at programs like the Friends of the Library book sales that are frequently featured in. And we can also track the growth of attendance at programs like the Friends of the Library book sales that are frequently featured in the city hall connection. For the website, we'll provide ongoing maintenance and continue highlighting the addition of new services and programs. And we'll always aim to improve the usability and readability of our website. And in terms of readability, it would be how reading readers are able to read our website and also we're aiming to have a maximum eighth grade grade reading level for all of our pages. We'll also focus on ADA compliance, which is a shared focus with our colleagues at the communications and outreach division at the city. And one of the most straightforward ways that we can track our, that we can measure our success, measure the impact of our website is through analytics. So the screen capture on the right of this slide shows one of the many analytics pages that we can access for our website. For social media, we'll continue to find ways to produce a variety of content and grow our audience. One of my main goals for social media is to increase the number of the videos and reels that viewers can engage with. And we'll continue creating content that showcases our personality. And maybe the way we measure impact for social media is very similar to how we measure impact for the website. Each of the platforms has its own analytics platform. For example, the screen capture shows what the YouTube analytics looks like. It'll show us the number of current subscribers, how many subscribers we gained in the last eight days, summary of views and much more. One of the best ways to measure impact on social media specifically is through engagement such as comments, likes and shares and bookmarks on posts. I've also been tracking program registration and attendance through our boosted, for our boosting posts. For the newsletters, we'll continue to refine and improve our content and layout. One of my main goals for the newsletters is to gather content from L C T to have them get more involved in producing content that is important to their workgroups. We do have performance measures for the newsletter, including the number of subscribers, percent change year over year, percent of newsletters opened and the average percent of communications from government entities opened by recipients is the performance. And the performance measures is a benchmark for us. So our goal with that last point is to just be above that threshold. We will continue attending city events. The city is actually growing the number of events that they invite for residents, which is very exciting for all of us. We'll continue growing community partnerships and relationships with the city apartments. Community partnerships would include apartment complexes, senior living areas and more. We get a few requests each year from neighborhood associations asking if we can attend their annual block party or their annual ice cream social. We'll continue to assess if we can attend these, these kind of smaller events, these non-city events to get more connected with our community. We're always on the lookout for more interesting practical giveaways and we even have an opportunity to create and design giveaways in-house. And we'll measure the impact of our participation at outreach events by the number of people we interact with at each event, the number of giveaways we've distributed, the number of library cards that we issue, as well as anecdotal. And the photo on the, on this slide is about participation at National Night Out last August in the city. And it was the first time that we participated in this event. It was a, it was a great turnout. For the flyers, we may ask our summer intern to design a new flyer template. I've asked L C T about this and they all agree that while the current format works, it doesn't hurt to explore more ideas. So we'll see what the intern can come up with because they do have some graphic design background. For projects, we will continue to look for ways to engage residents and customers and we will continue to collaborate with staff on projects pertaining to communications. So summary of communications in the future. We'll continue meeting with staff regularly to ensure residents are receiving the latest information from the library. We'll continue to gather a wide range of data from many sources to evaluate our communications efforts. We will keep track of the changing landscape of public-facing communication systems such as social media and newsletters. Social media and particular moves very fast and sometimes suddenly, so we'll pay close attention to any changes in that area. And we will continue to attend the communications roundtable meetings with the city's communications and outreach division to receive the links that comes not just from the division itself, but across the city. So that was the summary of great communications. And if there are any questions?
Yeah, um, first of all, it's like an amazing amount of work that you're doing. It's really impressive. Share breadth of the communications work that's going on both that you've taken on here. I guess I'm kind of curious, like, there's a lot of activities listed and it's like, what's the goal? Like the top level goal, like the, you know, the number of attendees engagement on specific things is good, but it's like, I could think like, is it to increase awareness of the library to people that don't know of the, or is it to increase engagement from people who already know of the library, get them to come more, or is it increase like usage of the library, like number, like kind of like top level? Is there, I mean, if there, maybe it's a little bit of all of those. And I'm just curious kind of like how you think about like, yeah, there's an infinite number of things you could do as communications librarian, like, how do you start to prioritize? How do you start to think about like, what's, how do I compare this versus that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and it is. The way I think about it, it is kind of like a combination of all of those all together, but for for me, the philosophy is really just getting those word out about what we are doing here at the library. Staff puts in a ton of effort to get all of these programs and services launched and I think just to make people aware of that and to make them aware that it's also a free resource and that the library is open for everyone to use. I think that we can always, we can always push that and all of our efforts will always build a lot enough to something. There's always something where we continue to get the word out about the library.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. Due to how much work is done, it's great to be aware of it. So, yeah, that's great. Thanks.
I had two questions, both very separate from each other. The first question was in the present. I think you mentioned in your top five list of items most used, number five was the digital library. But that includes, say, flipster magazines, comic books, DVDs that are, you know, stream, et cetera, et cetera. Are there specific things in the digital library that are more used than others?
Um, yes. So when I provided the digital library as one of the top pages, that was quite literally the number of clicks that were on the digital library page of our website. I could go into granular detail in our website analytics regarding which ones were clicked more often than others. So we do have statistics on each of the digital library resources and how they're used. I don't have that number right now.
It probably, yes, because we just did an analysis for next year's budget on, and the digital library page is now fee. But then we also, all of our vendors, we get statistics from, so I would say like the number three, which was New York Times Online, is probably one of our highest used digital sources.
That makes sense. And, and
What A T has already pointed out, it kind of shows or demonstrates that the library website is distinct from other city websites or webpages in the sense that it is not just a source of information, but the customers, the library customers interact with it, engage with it. Top five, New York Times Online, they're getting like the codes to be able to access. My library record, they're placing holes, they're, they're signing up for, for, for a program. So you'll see that it's, it has if other uses aside from being informational, that's why the city made us a sub-site and not just your part of the city website. It has its own autonomy, so to speak.
Okay, and then in the future category, you mentioned potentially having an effort to attend some smaller community gatherings, you know, ice cream socials, et cetera. I'm assuming that has not been done in the past and present at all. So is that going to be like a new effort or something you're expanding on?
I believe we have gone to some ice cream socials and annual block parties in the past. Then recently, we have to take a look at if, how, how possible it is to attend these events. Sometimes they happen on a really hard dates, like Sundays or night times. And so we kind of take those as a case-by-case basis. But we do hope to attend more in the future.
And is it the case that you're trying to prioritize that more because you're getting more requests or what's kind of the?
We are, I believe we are getting more requests. Not sure about the history about them.
Right. I, I would say we're getting more requests in the last few years, definitely for the smaller events and the larger city events. We've mostly gone to the larger city events, but yeah, the neighborhood organizations tabling at a specific event, whether it's city, a community-based organization, a neighborhood, their, their night. So we're definitely getting more.
Okay.
I'm curious. So it seems like you basically have kind of two forms that you think about. It's one's digital and one's in person. Like, have you seen a better more impact from one versus the other? And you cut it to this, like, how do you prioritize how much time you put into like one effort versus another?
Like in terms of like social media and newsletter presence versus?
Versus going in person to, you know, like there's so many events, like there's just so many things that you could do. So how do you end up prioritizing and giving it how much time within each? Like, I feel like for social media, you could just spend all day going and responding to people, you know, like, I see people do that. Right? So how, how do you decide what?
Is there a framework or decision-making process that you use?
For prioritizing that, I mean, I wish there was a lot more time, say, for example, to dedicate to social media and really doing a lot more videos, but then I have to also think about when I'm balancing out all of these major tasks. And I did outline like all of the major categories, like the director's reports, the council newsletters, things that have a very consistent timeline for me that have actual deadlines. But sometimes depending, depending on this, depending on the projects that I'm on, then I can focus more on one thing versus others. So for example, with Brain Fuse Burst, that, which is more of a YouTube, something that we put on YouTube, that I can kind of go into social media as well. That's something I can also share on social media. So when I'm kind of like thinking about the ways that I do my work, I try to find as many ways to apply that to as many areas as possible, if that makes sense.
And do you feel that that, like, you reach more people that way than when you go to the in-person events?
For me, they're kind of separate in my mind. When you go to the in-person events, they're more, they're automatically drawing more people in from the public that might not know about the library already. So I just kind of think about them in two separate ways. Not sure if that really answers your question.
Or just maybe, it seemed like those, you're still continuing everything. Like, was there anything that you stopped doing? Because if you add more stuff, it just seems like you're overwhelmed.
No, there's, I haven't stopped doing anything since I moved to this position two years ago. So we all have the same things that, that was the thing when I first started. So the managing social media, the newsletters, director's reports and things like that. And then the projects are sort of added on on top of that. So right now, it is, it's, it's a pretty good consistent pace I am running with, but I haven't, I haven't gotten rid of any of that.
Yeah, I guess it's, that's where some like getting clear about overall goals and priorities might help you say like, okay, there's these three new things I want to add. Next, these should be more valuable than this thing I'm already doing. Maybe I should drop this to start doing these things. And there's, it's hard to make the, if you only add, it's hard to steer out actually thinking about making those trade-offs in that way. But it's very tempting, is what I use to work in corporate at least. Like always like, let's add more stuff. Like, no, we're gonna like, if we started today, if we were looking at all these things and starting to say, would we still do this? Was, like, what should I always had to ask people?
Always put more effort into one thing, right? But you found that it was more worthwhile. And so then you do want to.
I had one great experience at one point where I was like running a bunch of reports because I've heard my job and I took like a two-month break. And nobody cared that they hadn't run long. I was going, I'm like, I haven't done running those reports. Nobody's looking at them. Nobody had noticed they were gone. I'm like, I don't think it's really that important. But that's kind of example where like, I wasn't, because I hadn't yet tested, but this is still adding the impact I wanted. It was helpful to actually run the, pick it up.
Good to have an ongoing conversation about that, especially with our L C T and kind of getting more feedback from them about which direction that they think would be most valuable to go in. It's definitely something I can talk with about them.
I'll give one example, very granular. And this is what libraries, it's, we have so much under the surface besides reading and the certain programs and a lot of it with the databases. If you talk to anybody, oh, I didn't know you had free magazines, you had this free tutoring service. And you know, Katie will, every so often she'll add it to the newsletter, make a flyer, do a big promotion for some of it. And every year we do look at some of our digital resources and say, you know, this is a great resource. We've tried to market it. We've brought it here. We've, you know, you know, done the, the, the push on social media and it's still not getting used. So if the usage just isn't up there, it might get cut. And that's how we have to look at our, our resources every year for materials and digital resources. And then one other thing is, just to tie into the city councils, they've talked to about continuous improvement. And last year as part of the budget process, all of the departments highlighted all the things that they've looked at to improve their processes. And it was like, I don't know, thirty-page, seventy-page, something document of all the departments. And one of the things Katie mentioned in her presentation is our kiosk. Before, you had to go to each one and update. And so we're getting a new software where she'll be able to update on one, on her computer and then it'll push out to all of them. So that's one way of, of, of work, of, you know, to term the phrase working smarter, not harder kind of thing. So we're always looking at that. But you, you all brought up some good things that I think L C T and the library leadership team will have to look at and say, what, what do we want our priorities and focus on? Because all of those we are doing. We're trying to engage users. We're trying to reach users who don't know about us. We're trying to keep the users who are using cis.com, that kind of thing. So what, what is our focus?
In, in addition to what Tracy and Katie has already shared, we are more intentional in, in what we do, especially on social media. We're not on every platform. It used to be that every time there's a new platform, like every library, there's excitement for one week and then nothing's happening with that one. She does review regularly, like engagement, may just see how those posts, those articles are tracking or creating awareness with the public. And like what she said, already pointed out in her presentation, there's a lot of like reusing the same posts for the director's report, the city council newsletters, the monthly newsletters and the posts. It's just changing the tone and whether it's more a serious tone or an informal tone, but the content, content is the same. That's what she gets for any one person is is cooking all these dishes, other than like different staff who are not communicating with each other. And she has like an excellent team that helps her. We have like a social media calendar that we planned ahead in terms of what gets posted. So her workload is also not that much and we constantly review that. There's a, if there's a, a need to like reassess or change the workload.
I love the newsletters. Very good.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you for reading them.
I want to compliment you because I go way back to the point where flyers were hand-drawn. It was well before word processing and you use sheets. If you couldn't hand letter the text, you use press-on letters and had to line them up with transparency sheets and other. you, um, use press-on letters and had to line them up with transparency sheets and other things. It was very time-consuming. And it certainly was spread throughout the library with each little part. And we only had a communications director back in the mid nineties, who left in ninety-five. And that was the last time we had a centralized person who did that. And I only know that because I was the handoff person to have to handle the telephone messages that we had to record at the time for all the holidays and things. And she was leaving and I suddenly was called into a meeting and said, you're gonna be the telephone person. So I'm really glad there's one person again as a point person. What, where do you find that you get as a, as the point person, the most ideas from the public for programs or new ideas for something the library should, should do or change? Do you have one piece of this where you have a contact that you do actually get input from the community that way?
We need directly, um, and mostly receive feedback by attending the outreach events myself. Um, I do try to attend as many of these outreach events as I can. Um, and actually just recently at the Earth and Arbor Day Festival, we did receive a few bits of, um, feedback from the community. And so, um, I did come on in twenty twenty-three and they'd be referencing something that was a program of pre-COVID. And, um, I would say I'm obviously know about the status of that, of that right now. So let me go back and ask my team. But that's kind of how I hear directly firsthand that people are still interested in this. Take it back to our team.
I was interested in the, the loop, um, aspect of it. You've got, uh, analytics where you can tell someone's looked at it. But again, hearing something back from them, it's mainly in person bands where you get a lot of that content.
Yes, and then, um, other than that, since I really only go to the outreach events, um, I do rely on LCT members to inform me of anything that they hear about from the public, just because they're in contact with the public a lot more frequently. Thank you for all your questions. I am the phone person now too.
Is there any feedback you've gotten from the public that surprised you in any way?
Um, other than, um, hearing about programs that I, I didn't know about, just because I still am relatively new to this library, um, heard anything too surprising, I would say. It's a lot of, like a large majority of the, of the time I hear, we love the library and you guys are doing great and we're so happy to see you out here. Um, other valuable, um, things I get from the public when we go to some outreach events is, um, they just have like no idea that we had existed. They didn't know where our location was. They didn't know what our website was. And, um, I can hand them one of these bookmarks that I forgot to share. Bookmarks are general information bookmarks that have all of our, like hours and some things.
Basic information in one place.
Loan periods, but we also, um, refer them multi-cultural, um, the decultural engagement program to create, um, translations of each of these. So we have it in Persian. We have it in Spanish. We have it in Chinese. And so that way we can just, um, share more with them through their language.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there anybody on the line?
Yeah, okay.
Then we can move to unfinished business. There's no unfinished business. Big business. And so we can launch the library director's book.
Sure. Just a few things about you received the written report, but as a reminder, we closed on Thursday, May first, our staff development day, um, that all of the staff will be together for a day of team building and learning. And the Friends Book Sale is coming up the weekend after that, Saturday, May third and Sunday, May fourth. And as you'll see, we, um, um, have a lot of new initiatives for teen services. And we have the citywide Discover Awards and, um, staff are busy getting ready for summer reading. Uh, some other updates, we had two new staff who started today. Our lead security services guard started today. So we're thrilled to have that position, um, filled in one of our library position. So we just have two vacancies that, um, HR is currently working with us on recruiting for one of those. And so we're getting there with filling our vacancies, which is um, very exciting. And then last Tuesday, um, the city, it was last Tuesday, the city council had their first meeting about the budget. And so some of the items that the city manager puts through that were library department requests, um, throws additional money to continue the career success allowance program. Um, so that's in, in there as a proposal and we're excited about that because all slots are currently filled. We have two graduates, a couple of people close to finishing, um, and some great success stories for that. Um, one who used the funding for that to take a test, um, to advance in, in their career and a second similar. So that's a great program. So, um, and then some, um, continuation because our lead security services guard is a limited period position. So that's being proposed to continue being funded next year as a limited period as well as a half-time library assistant. And then our contracted security services, um, that's kind of a, um, an alternate to help, um, um, with security. So we have, uh, the lead guard and then, uh, contracted guards that we use as well as building, building attendance to help with security. So the next budget meeting that the council will um, move forward is, uh, June, June fourth. That, uh, the next budget that will go to them is June tenth. And then they will adopt the final, um, budget on June twenty-fourth for starting July fourth. Um, so, and then one of the items that city council brought up at the meeting, um, in which the, they asked the city manager is to look at what resources would be needed to expand library hours, particularly on Sundays. So, um, myself and the admin team have been putting together, um, staffing, what it would take for staffing resources, um, to open one additional hour or two for, um, and so, um, I'll be, um, relaying that to the city manager's office and you'll be giving that information to the city council to then decide for this year, you know, moving forward. Um, so that was, um, something that they, they discussed. We don't know if anyone has any questions about the budget and then about the Institute of Museum and Library Services.
This is interesting because we talked about that last week.
Right, right.
So was that something that was like, um, like a, a being asked from the community or how did that come up?
No, um, you know, I would say we've probably, we, we don't get that request very much. Once in a while we'll get requests. Some, you know, once in a while we'll get requests to stay open till midnight or something, you know, um, I think it's someone at college. Yeah, somebody who was maybe a college student that is used to the college library. But it hasn't really come up in the community, but, um, it was something that, you know, city councils, I think saw as something, they see how busy we are and what a, a value the library is. So, um, yeah, unless there were members of the public possibly that, that, um, talked with them or just looking at our schedule. We are open four hours on Sunday, eight hours on Saturday. Um, so it could have just been come up as a question. There are, um, some neighboring libraries that are open, longer hours on Sunday. Sunnyvale's open five hours total. And I think Los Altos, which is part of Santa Clara, um,
The county.
The county, um, district, they're open eight hours. So it varies. And then some Pella Alto branches are closed on Sunday. Some city of Santa Clara are closed. So, um, we did look at all the hourly, um, out of about twenty neighboring libraries we looked at. There are only four that are open more hours than us. So we are right up there with, uh, one of the most total weekly hours, um, kind of thing.
All it takes is one council member with a kid going, why can't I?
So, well, yeah, so we'll see. So we're putting that together. It's a puzzle. Library hours, just having two floors, you know, five different, three, three major service desk, security, all the things that, that belong to, to, uh, extend library hours. It's, it's not just one desk and one window and and all that's where we're compiling that information as, as. And then, um, part of the packet, I did include the press release that came from the California State Library, um, regarding the termination of federal grants from the Institute of Museum and Library Services. So that, um, agency had, um, there were some effects of that agency a couple of weeks ago that all seventy-five of their employees were told to go home, were on administrative leave for ninety days. Um, they, the, the federal administration appointed a new person director and all grants were halted. Um, they give probably two hundred fifty million plus grants to states every year. This past year, California was, um, um, uh, planned to receive about sixteen million dollars in grants. Not all of that money has been distributed to the state. Some of those grants, for instance, one of, um, the items that would affect us is the New York Times Online. That is funded by through the Library Service Technology Act, which is, um, from the state library, but comes from the IMLS funding. So, uh, the state library had a meeting on Thursday with all the public library directors in the state. Not a whole lot of news for us yet, since this is, is pretty new news, but, um, myself and Melvin and our, um, management team went through all of the items we get from the state, from, um, that could be affected. And luckily, the good news is a lot of our items, um, I, for instance, I did check with the state library. For instance, State Park passes are, are considered safe for now. They're state-funded. The Career Online High School Program, which I was very concerned about, especially that we have this stipend program attached to it, but so far that's safe. Um, so the biggest one for us, and luckily, so we just had, um, the Cultural Heritage Disaster Preparedness Project leaded consultant come here and look at our historic, history center and all of our items. That's at stake, but luckily we received our consultation recommendations already. Um, if you remember Renateen, our librarian who came to talk about the Bookmobile and she showed Policy Map, the on the demographic database system and how she was zeroing into neighborhoods and pooling information. That's, um, um, funded by the, uh, a grant funded that's, um, could be, um, halted next year. Um, so our biggest was the New York Times. We're hoping, um, our friends will be able to fund it. Um, and obviously I had given all this information to the city manager and the city manager's office. Um, but, um, we're coming out okay compared to some other libraries, but um, there's about twenty states, including California, that have filed a lawsuit over this funding, um, stating that it's, it's Congress who, who approves this and, and so forth. So who knows if it'll stay in litigation and hopefully we'll find out more within the ninety days of the staffing. And then as I hear more from the state library, um, I'll update everyone at the, the next meeting. But that's, um, you know, what's been going on in a nutshell of, of federal, state and, um, um, budget. So all kind of at the same time, standing tall, um, locally or across the state of people making a priority in some of the demonstrations that are going on. Is there any unified action being considered? Um, the California Library Association, which is a separate entity from the state library. They're, they're a membership organization like the American Library Association. And they actually hire, um, and they've had, have always had, um, um, hopes that are, um, forget the, the terminology, but they're writing letters and, and doing the campaigns.
During the political.
I think I mentioned during National Library Week, every year in April, library directors throughout the state have what's called Day in the District. And we go have meetings with legislators or their aides. And it happened to be last week. So not only, usually we're asking for funding and continued funding of regular state library funds because last fiscal year, some of the California State Library funding was cut just because of the issues with the state budget. Um, but this year we had all the, this other, um, things that, that, um, we were concerned with and talked about. But there are, the American Library Association is heavily involved, California Library Association. Um, and there are consortiums that we belong to. We belong to the Pacific Library Partnership. So all the consortiums are writing letters to the state and federal legislators about it as well. So.
And because it's at a stage where it'd be useful to percolate that down to local users.
Right.
To, to advertise that more and to get that momentum going. It's sort of like the Harvard situation. If you can get people to resist and, um, gather together at an early stage, sometimes you can make a difference.
Right. Yeah. And I've looked at anything that's from the American Library Association and I can keep checking. I haven't heard of anything because sometimes there's like on May second, everyone around the country, it's, you know, uh, you know, demonstrate or picket or something for the sake of libraries, but I haven't heard it.
There's so many issues that people are speaking up about here. There certainly were several signs, um, the, um, the April twelfth demonstration in Mountain View, uh, there were people that had libraries, they would save our libraries. And there were a few of those that were scattered among all the other topics and signs that were going on. I'm just keeping my ear to the ground too for any points of action that can be taken. And just again, alerting the general public that sometimes don't even know we have a library or where the library is, as you say. What's going on? That, um, they don't know the threat that.
Right.
Or under some of the articles, there was one recently where they just defeated a bill in Arkansas that was going to take away the state library and take away the state library board. That was just defeated in their legislature with pushback from some of the library organizations. So.
Yeah, um, the California Library Association does have one, if not more lobbyists who that are keeping track of not only state bills, but federal and keeping the members. Um, but I'll be sure to, to pass along anything I hear and vice versa. Cause there's so much, the, the shutting of the, um, IMLS, I think it happened on a Friday night and I, I had, yeah. I was still here.
Intentionally buried under certain things with the timing.
I saw, I've been keeping up with a lot and then that happened and I was like, yeah, yeah. But we're lucky in Mountain View, our city council and, um, city manager are supportive of the library and what we're doing. And um, especially as I mentioned, the career success allowance program, which was part of their initiative. And um, especially as I mentioned, the career success allowance program, which was part of their initiative of workforce development. Which is um, a big priority of council. So that's an exciting program that that will be continuing. Cause um, yeah, Mark Jack, our librarian, who presented uh on that last month. Um, um, just hearing the stories of, of those who are in it and what's initiating. That's just one of the most exciting programs I think we've had. It was Melvin's idea, I will say, to give him credit because he thought of it and it was fantastic. I didn't do this, so. I don't know. That's it, unless there really be more questions.
And just thank you for all you're doing in this really tough climate. It's a lot of work and a lot of energy.
Yeah, so tomorrow night at the city council meeting, um, one uh. Uh, is volunteer, they're doing a proclamation for city volunteers, recognizing all the city volunteers. Um, every year, um, the city gets gifts for all the volunteers and then there's a proclamation. And this year, um, one of our volunteers, Gaia Tree, who um, you saw in the photo. The Fouch is um going to accept it on behalf of the library. So that will be exciting. I'll be there with her um to accept that. So we're excited that, that the, the library volunteer is doing it this year.
It, it was really nice to see the honors too for your staff, for Julie and all the recognition for milestones. For your staff that have worked so many years.
Discover awards are nice because their colleagues are, colleagues do the um nominations. And so it's, it's great to see uh coworkers nominating each other and being recognized. Yeah. It was super great to see several of the library staff get the awards this year.
And I think we can move on to agenda setting.
For May, um, so far on the list for May is a presentation by our Youth Book Mobile and Collections Division. They'll give some recap um on what's going on in their division. And give a preview about some reading because it's coming up. They're in, in high preparations. And I believe our kickoff is June tenth, but um we'll give all the info at the main meeting. It on the schedule for now, but.
Last month you mentioned the city attorney's update to the behavior policy.
Yes, we, um, the um, Melvin and I and the managers are meeting with the city attorney in mid-May. And it wasn't enough time between our meeting and this meeting. So most likely bring the draft to you all at the June meeting. And our staff um gave us the draft of the collection policy update. That I had mentioned, the requirements of through the, the, the state. Legislative requirement. And so we'll probably have those for you sometime this summer. The behavior policy in June.
And I think we're to adjourn yet. Uh, meeting is adjourned at eight sixteen PM. The next Board of Library Trustees meeting will be held on Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, at seven AM.